Hi everybody and welcome back to a brand new vlog, New Week at Oxford. There's a lot of fun stuff going on. I will be going into London later this week for something, which I think is gonna be really cool. I've been really excited to do this. Um, we're doing it with my course. I'm probably gonna go in earlier just to like, because I don't have class in the morning that day anymore, so I'll probably just go in to do something anyway and make a day of it. Um, and then I'm gonna meet my class and we're gonna go like to the British Museum and stuff. So yeah, it's gonna be really fun and, but ahead of that and after that, this will probably mostly be like an essay writing video. It's going to be what it is, but um, there's also like bops and a lot of good social stuff going on at Pembroke and everything and in college and yeah, so it's gonna be a really good time. And um, Eloise is still here, so she'll be heading into um, London. She'll be moving back into London later, but for now, she's still here, so I'm assuming we're gonna have more café library days together. But yeah, today already I've gone out to the grocery store and stuff. Um, it's so nice out today. I'm like, is it, is it springtime now? Is it, is that happening? End of February? It's been crazy nice last few days. It's been like 10 to 12 degrees. One day it was warm, but it was still like kinda overcast and it drizzled a little bit. But um, today too, it's been so sunny, so that's really nice. Um, but then I just came back here, um, cuz I've been really sleepy today, actually. I went to bed a bit late last night cuz Eloise and I went to the Union event and then we've both been watching Love is Blind, so you know, I had to finish that. So we went to Jordan Peterson at the Union, quite a guy, and then came back here and I did finish all the new episodes of Love is Blind. I enjoy some of their Wisconsin accents. Makes me happy. I feel like this season is okay. There's some unhinged people. I know some people said that they don't like that they spend so much time in the pods in these ones, but it kinda depends on the season. Sometimes if they're like really, really dramatic afterwards, then obviously it's more fun like in the post pods, but I like the pod drama, so I might be in the minority on that. But yeah, that's my Love is Blind review. Yeah, so today's just gonna be doing more readings. Um, I'm prepping for, I have a meeting with one of my supervisors. My supervisor, um, who's more on the English side, uh, for my dissertation, I have a meeting with her this week, so I'm trying to like get stuff organized and everything for that, um, so that I know like what to show her and also what I wanna ask her, um, moving into the next stages of my dissertation. Again, that's like, I can only kinda focus on that so much before I get my two term papers done, because that's just like the more immediate deadline, obviously. But I wanna still be thinking about and you know, plugging away at my dissertation, um, and keeping that in the back of my head and everything. So yeah, still like moving on that, but nothing like super intensive happening, I guess, other than like organizing reading, getting like the foundational kind of stuff and like research and who I'm going to be reading for it. So yeah, that's kind of what I've been working on today and what I will be working on for the remainder of today, but yeah. So um, I am going to be heading out to, I'm gonna be heading out to New Theatre because Chloe and Anika and I got tickets to Chicago. I think it's like a, one of the touring shows, I'm pretty sure. And yeah, they're stopping in Oxford, so we're gonna go see that, which I'm so excited about cuz Chicago is one of my favorite musicals, one of my favorite movies, so I'm so excited to get to see it live. I think it's gonna be really cool. I love the Chicago movie, so I'm really excited to see it in person. And I've never actually been to anything at the New Theatre here. I've been to the Oxford Playhouse. Um, Anika's seen like a orchestra show at New Theatre, um, but yeah, I've never seen a play or anything, but they've always got like plays and musicals going, so I think it should be really fun. But yeah, gonna head out there now. So this is what I'm gonna wear to the show. Um, yeah, I'm really enjoying the warmer weather. I don't think that this is, like even shows in London, if you go dressed up, you don't look out of place, but if you go more casually, you also don't look out of place. Um, especially for the evening shows, I feel like people like maybe dress up a bit more for the evening shows in London, but I feel like um, New Theatre is probably like a similar vibe, like you can dress up a bit more if you want, but you don't have to. Probably like even more casual than London. It's just my guess. Um, I did see people coming out cuz I met Anika after her orchestra, orchestra show, and I did see people coming out and they like, we're dressed up, but not like anything too crazy or over the top, so yeah. I feel that I am appropriate. Good morning guys. So Chicago last night was so fun. The choreography was amazing. I feel like the actress that played Velma was really doing a Catherine Zeta-Jones voice, um, which I was not mad about. Um, I loved the movie musical. And yeah, it was a really, really fun show. There's only a couple songs that are in, at least in this musical, that this version, this production that aren't in the movie. So it's cool to like see a couple of new ones and everything. And yeah, it was just really, really fun, so I'm glad I went to that. Uh, today I'm going to, I think go to a café first. I'll see if I can get a seat. If not, I'll just maybe head to a library or something, um, to get some work done. And yeah, that's kind of what I have going on. I do have book club tonight. I've read ahead. I've read a bunch of the next short stories, so yeah, I'm, I'm prepared for that one tonight. Hello everybody. Um, it's a brand new day. Yesterday I went to Harris Manchester College for um, the Medieval Church and Culture Seminar. Today someone was doing a talk about scorpions in medieval Northern England, which seems quite random, probably. Um, but basically the talk was about how like they, it's basically about how like people obviously in Northern England like probably haven't encountered a lot of scorpions, but they have to represent them quite a bit, um, because of the Zodiac, so they'll put them on like the Book of Hours, Zodiac charts, um, calendars. So there's a lot of images of scorpions. And then the people who have seen scorpions, who are writing about them, aren't really describing what they look like because they're just like, it's a scorpion. Um, and in those texts, like scorpions because they're really dangerous, then they're sort of like depicted as evil. And at a certain point, then they naturally start being associated with women because you know, women are so deceptive and nasty. So they sort of describe scorpions as like having the face of a woman and a long tail and a stinger. And most of them have like pinchers and stuff, some of them don't. Um, yeah, so then it's just like people with these kind of like basic descriptions of what a scorpion looks like, then having to depict one in like stonework, uh, ink drawings, whatever. So you get some very like weird little animals. So we're just kinda looking at like different things, how they represented them and everything. So it wound up being like quite interesting. Um, very yes, seemingly kind of random, but a fun talk. And yeah, so that was just really fun. Then I headed back to Pembroke. We had our committee meeting, but um, the talk ran for like fifteen minutes longer than I thought it would, so I was like, I'll come back for the end of the meeting. But I'd already missed it. Like I guess it only lasted like fifteen, twenty minutes, so pretty short meeting. Um, but then I also had book club at Pembroke in the evening, so that was quite fun. Got to chat more about um, two stories. We read The Thing Around Your Neck, um, which is like the title story of the collection, and American Embassy. And I thought they were both like, they were a good one to wind up reading together because they're both kind of about, it's like two sides of the story. One, she's like, maybe, she's going to maybe get her visa from the American Embassy and she kind of has to prove that she's seeking asylum. Um, and then in the other story, she's gotten a visa and is in America. And yeah, it was just, it was an interesting week and they were cool to read together, so that was fun. But today I have a meeting with one of my supervisors, so this will be a meeting with um, my supervisor from the English faculty, so then obviously we'll be consulting more on the English subjects of my paper, so I'm really hoping to kind of nail down my primary literary texts with her today, um, see what she thinks about what I've been thinking. Um, but I also, I'm going to be going to the Weston to look at a couple of manuscripts that I've called up for my B course, the Paleography Essay, so yeah, gonna be going looking at those. I'm not sure if we're allowed to take photos. I'm hoping that we can, so that like you can work off of it and everything. I'm pretty sure you can, but I'll ask. So yeah, gonna go do that today. And then I'm going to Games Night at uh, my friend Maya's house. She's organizing that, so it should be a fun evening. I've just stopped by the MCR to steal slash borrow some games for May's Game Night, um, because she, she said she doesn't have like a ton because she wasn't able to run back home to get any, so I have, I thought we had more board games in here than we do, but I have Cards Against Humanity and Articulated and a pack of cards, so hopefully that will be helpful. Um, but yeah, I just had my meeting, um, which was at Worcester, which I'm very happy that I have another supervisor there cuz I love that college. I would take a little walk. Obviously it looks nicer in spring/summer when the flower beds are actually full. But yeah, next to Pembroke, that college probably has my favorite landscaping cuz I think that Pembroke's garden beds are some of the best ones. In Oxford, I'm completely unbiased. I like Pembroke cuz it has like the very quad, big building, Oxford-y look, but then it's got really, really nice flower beds, whereas like Christchurch, obviously very grand, but um, they don't really do any gardens, like they've just got lawns. So I mean, it works, but yeah, I just like Pembroke. But I like Worcester cuz it's um, it's a bit different. Like you come in and it's the very like typical Oxford quad, but then they have, it feels kind of like a small park, which I really like, and it's very nice in the summer time. Um, and it's nice today cuz it's a nice sunny day out, so my meeting um, actually was a lot faster than I thought, um, so it wrapped up pretty quick. So I went for a little walk around the college, um, which is nice. And yeah, the meeting was good. It was very quick because she was basically like, you have these other essays to work on right now, right? And I said, yep. She was like, so you probably can't really do anything until the vacation, right? And I said, yep. So she was like, here are the things that I think you should do over vacation. And I was like, slay. So yeah, I've got a plan for what we're doing next, which is good. Good morning guys. So last night at May's was so fun. We wound up playing um, What Do You Mean and Articulate. So it was a really good time. I had a lot of fun. And it was really nice of May to host us and everything, so that was quite cool. Um, today is gonna be fun because I'm going into London because my course is taking us to the Medieval Women Exhibition at the British Library, so I'm really excited to see that. I've heard that it's very cool. So I'm really looking forward to that. I decided to go in a bit earlier because like, may as well go do something else while in London. It's not like a ton of time cuz I think I should arrive around like eleven-ish and we're supposed to meet at one, so I have like a couple of hours. Uh, hopefully the train isn't delayed. Yeah, so like even just to like get something kind of fun to eat or something, I think will be cool. So yeah, that's kind of my plan for today. I could have stayed here and done like some more work and stuff, but I was like, I'm gonna take the chance while I have it. Um, yeah, so I'm just gonna head out to the train station now. Good morning guys. So I meant to recap the day yesterday, but I just crashed as soon as I got home cuz I was so tired. But it was a really cool day. We started off at going to Private Collection, actually, which was quite interesting. Um, I couldn't take any pictures there or anything cuz it was like no pictures, no social media, no nothing. Um, it was, yeah, it's like, it's insane that people can just like buy that stuff, you know? So it was, it's just this like, I presume very wealthy guy who's just very interested in that kinda stuff, like the medieval period, but he's very like, I don't know, his interests are like quite expansive then, like it's not really confined to like one location, one time period necessarily, or like any one thing. Like there's a really wide variety of objects. It is mostly objects. Um, yeah, so it's just kind of like interesting to see that side of it, I guess. There was a couple dogs running around, so that was fun. Um, yeah, then we went to the British Library for the Medieval Women Exhibition, which is actually closing this weekend, um, which is too bad, but it's, it was quite cool. It was a lot of manuscripts, which makes sense, but I kind of thought there'd be like a, a bigger variety of like manuscripts as well as objects. I feel like especially towards the start of the exhibit, there was like more objects as well. Um, there's a birthing girdle, which was really cool. I feel like probably the most recognizable thing or person that's mentioned in the exhibit is Joan of Arc. She's towards the end and they have a, a letter from her where she's um, asking for more gunpowder, basically. So that was quite cool. And then they have um, like Julian of Norwich's books, Marjorie Kemp. Um, they had Marie de France and a lot of Margaret Paston's letters, which is quite cool. She was um, she was like an aristocratic woman. She, one of my supervisors was talking to me about her. She um, kind of like, cuz you know, like during that time period, you have the Hundred Years' War, then you have like the War of the Roses and everything, so you have a lot of um, men are off and they're busy, so then the women are running the estate. So you get a lot of like very powerful aristocratic women with a lot of authority, and Margaret Paston is one. So we have a lot of her letters, um, between her and her husband and, but her and other people as well. So there is a bunch of stuff um, to do with her there, which was quite cool. And then yeah, um, then they booked a pub out for us after, so we were at the pub for a bit cuz actually all of us had unthinkingly bought off-peak tickets, which basically means that like during the week, you can't travel during sort of like peak rush hour, like when people are commuting to and from work. So we had to wait until like that time was ended to return home, which isn't like that late. Probably got back around eight thirty-ish, eight thirty-nine-ish, but yeah. It was just, it was a long day, but it was very, very cool, so that was fun. Today I have my history class, so it's just gonna be presentations. So we have two weeks where we're each sort of like doing very short presentations on what our essays are gonna be about. So I'm not this week, I'm next week. Um, so I'm, I'm really excited to hear what people are doing, especially cuz like history isn't, I haven't done like a graduate history class before. And yeah, so I think I'm very excited to hear what people are doing. And then after that, I have the last research methods class. I get to hear more people's dissertation topics. And then nothing in the afternoon and then bop in the evening, so it's gonna be a fun day. Hello everybody. Sorry that this has been so boring today. Um, well, not boring cuz you haven't even seen anything. But it was just a very full-on day because I had my history class, which was really cool to hear people's topics. And then I had research methods, so again, hearing people's dissertation presentations. And then I think it ran long today. And then I had like some online recruitment events from one of the PhD programs I'm considering. And I was like hustling back here to be able to log on to the Zoom. And then I was just doing those all afternoon. And then I had to submit titles and abstracts for everything. So I was just busy doing that. Um, but Eloise and I just had dinner together. And I'm, I'm going to head in for the bop soon. It's Hollywood Icons themed, so I am Tom Cruise in Risky Business, which I'm not confident that anyone here is gonna get, but that's what I'm doing. Tomorrow, I think I'm gonna try to go to some of the rowing races, uh, which should be fun, but I also know what I'm gonna be doing because that's my phone screen right now. So I'm gonna see if any of the places can fix it. And if not, the nice thing though about like being perpetually yoked to technology is that I can text and do everything on my laptop and on my watch, so I don't feel like totally vulnerable without it, but um, yeah, not great. So good morning guys. So yeah, yesterday, bop was really good. It started off very slow, not many people there. But um, eventually we had like a decent amount of people show up, so that was good. Um, no costumes again. I was the only person dressed up. Not sure if anybody got what I was trying to do, but I assume people just thought I was there in boxers. So today I'm going to go try to see if I can get my phone fixed. Hopefully they'll be able to, hopefully it's just like the screen, I don't know. But um, I'm gonna see if they can fix it. And then hopefully this afternoon, we'll be able to go to the races, uh, by the river, so it should be fun. Today is like the more social day when there's like gonna be a bunch of people and like PIMS and everything, so yeah, gonna go see what's going on there. Attempted to take down our bop decorations, but these are just too high and I kept tripping them. So they were able to fix my phone, which is nice. And I even got a screen protector. I've put on this phone case that has the strap, which I got this because I like to wear it when I go into London because not gonna be snatching your, my phone on me. I either like wear it and then sometimes I'll like tuck it in my actual phone into my pocket, so it's not just sitting out. Or if I'm just like using my phone, I'll like wrap it around my hand and then to the, you know, it's some dangling. So if someone grabs it, I'm coming along with it. But um, I was like, mm. I've used it a couple times around Oxford, uh, but I usually just swap it out for my regular case when I'm back because the strap can get annoying. However, I was like, mm, I guess then I won't drop it anymore. Um, the case itself isn't like a really intense protective case for when you drop it, but I mean, neither is my other one, so whatever. Uh, but yeah, it also had the effect of fixing my front camera because for a long time, my front camera has looked like really blurry and it just doesn't really work. Um, there wasn't like a crack across it or anything, and it was like, my phone screen was a bit cracked before, but the camera had been blurry before it got cracked. So I thought like, maybe I've tried cleaning it before, didn't work, so I was like, maybe the camera itself is damaged or it's just like scratches on the screen in front of the camera. I don't know, but like getting, they just like replaced the screen and then I, I don't know if they fixed anything like internally, but um, I don't know, the screen works again and the camera looks clear, which is really nice to have that fixed. So yeah, nice. Um, I was just gonna hang out at the MCR until we went to um, the boat races, but I was in the MCR until my phone got fixed and I got really cold cuz it was like the heater hadn't been on, so it was just like chilly in there. But um, yeah, I'm gonna head out with Chloe and Anika to go watch some of the boat races now. We're just going for like the Division One, Women's and Men's, um, instead of like being out there all day. But yeah, it's fun. It's, I think it's gonna be kind of like Summer Eights, which I really, really enjoyed. It was really fun last year, so yeah, hopefully do that. I'll hope that, hopefully I'll be able to do um, the Cambridge-Oxford Boat Race later in the summer. Um, and then I'll do summer, go to Summer Eights again cuz it was really fun, but yeah. Gonna go watch some sports. But yeah, gonna go watch some sports. Hi, everybody. So today's been very chill. I've just been doing stuff around home all day, but, um, I would like to get out. So I'm going to go for a walk and stuff and then, um, probably like get groceries and everything after. So yeah, gonna go get some fresh air and everything. So I went for a walk down High Street and then stopped to get some groceries, some food. And I was like, I'd better get a little treat. So I was gonna get a chocolate orange, but they didn't have any. Um, but they did have these like Terry's Chocolate Orange Cream Eggs, which I thought was intriguing, so I'm gonna try it. Hmm, oh, I thought it'd be more liquidy. It's pretty good. I really like regular cream eggs, but I know they're not for everyone cuz like the inside is just so, so sweet, but it's like very sugary. This is less sweet, I would say. But yeah, you're not gonna like if you don't like orange chocolate, but it does just taste like a Cherry, Terry's Chocolate Orange, so it's a win for me. Hi, guys. So I've just been having a very chill night in, reading, um, for fun. I've also been going over some of like the Higeyography stuff that I'm gonna be doing for, um, history. So did get a little bit of work done this weekend, which is good. Um, but yeah, I also got like a lot of errands and stuff done today, which was nice. Um, cuz I, like I really needed to do laundry. So that was good. And yeah, just gonna be quite a chill evening now. So I'm probably just gonna say goodbye here. Thanks for watching and I will see you in the next vlog. Where is that? Here, haha. Something on the camera. That's paper.